You guys ready? John, we all set?
Yep, all set.
It's seven o'clock. We're to call the meeting of the Garfield Township Planning Commission order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And would you please take a roll, the members?
Here.
Here. Here. Here. Here. Here. Okay. The first item on our agenda is public comment. We have public comment at the beginning of and at the end of our meetings. And then we also have a public hearing tonight on the angel care, healthcare.
Childcare.
I'm sorry?
Childcare.
Childcare. Angel care, childcare, excuse me. Sorry about that. And that will be a public hearing. So I would suggest, although not required, that if you're here to comment about the childcare, that you might be more appropriate to wait until we're discussing that particular item. So at this point, we will open up public comment. Anybody who would like to speak in public comment, please come forward, state your name and address and what you'd like to talk about.
Philip Beeler, it's the High Tops. I just want to explain a couple of things. I understand concerns with the noise and stuff. I basically was trying to open up an entertainment facility with a sports bar. I know there's a lot of things with the occupancy that high, that was pretty high. And I did that to plan for certain events. It's not 2,000 people of chaos all the time. That's for a special event if I had concerts a handful of times maybe a year. I was going to soundproof the auditorium, which was going to be for comedy night, bands or nightclub. And I was going to have a gaming facility. I'm trying to work through, I have other options coming up that we're going through and ideas. I wanted to table it for now until I can have more information, but the concerns with the sound was already something that I wanted to address in the project before. I can, me trying to do this. But it was really just an entertainment facility that a handful of times, and I don't know if any, that many people would even, that many people would even come to that. I was just trying to prep for future stuff for, you know, big A-list events that I might have a hand time, or handful of times a year. And that's why the occupancy was high. So, but I do understand the sound and parking noise and all, and that.
So you're asking that be removed from the agenda tonight?
For tonight, yes. Because I still, I, because of this, we're trying to explore other options and other ways that we could probably figure something better out.
Okay. All right. So John, when we finish public comment and then when we review the, approve the agenda, just remove that item from the agenda?
Correct. It will remain tabled, but it's off the, it would be off the agenda for this evening for discussion.
Well, my intentions wasn't to have a chaotic system here with 2,000 people every night. That's not what I was trying to go for. So it was kind of a once in a while thing if we had some big A-list events. And that was why I did the occupancy for that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I appreciate his mentioning and his concerns, but the biggest point really has nothing to do with the things that were mentioned necessarily. Yeah, noise can be a thing. The biggest issue is our families and our children and those, it's about the environment. If you take a step back and look at a, in a certain area and its layout, its landscape, the amount of families and people that live around and different, just different things, like just go for a walk, you know what I'm saying? Like when you're in a car, it's a whole different, another scenario. When you go for a walk, you can see the differences in what is there. You have an entire road on the, literally within like 15, 20 yards through, through some trees and bushes that there's an entire, like just regular chain wire fence with entrances and exits with brand new sidewalks that just got put in. So anybody on that side can go, come on this side and that side can go on that side. And so you kind of throw, it's not just a one faceted type scenario that we're looking at here. We're looking at a multifaceted. So different aspects. So you've got to look at the fact that you've got, the Goodwill has put in Carson Square just down on the corner, which is a lot of lower, lower income individuals who say have been through recovery. They're coming off from addictions such as alcohol. And if you have a, you know, a bar that's just right through the walkway there, you know, that's a temptation, you know, it, there's just so many little factors. Down Woodward Avenue, we have a lot of families on one side, and then on, on the other side, we have a lot of elders who have 15, 20 years ago purchased their townhouses and said, this is where I want to retire and spend the next 15, 20 years of my life before I pass away. Because at the time, it was peaceful. It was quite, and that was even back when the mall, it was actually like a small mall back when everything was hopping, before it all shut down around COVID and a little bit before COVID. We've got people that are wa, I've got two houses down from, from me where I live on Woodward. The ladies tend to take their bikes and ride. And we've got people just down the road that walk their dogs out back and along in the back, like area of the parking lot to, you know, let them use the restroom and stuff like that and pick up after them and things of that nature. But with all the traffic and all the different things, it's, it's not a matter of necessarily just about noise being an issue. It's more going to be about family safety, children, keeping the neighborhood calm and quiet. When you put in a, a business such as that in and around other businesses, you're not only giving off, you know, you're like changing the perspective that people have of those other businesses, one. You're changing the perspective of, of that area, what you're drawing into that area. You know, if, if the demographic that's drawn into that area is, you know, I mean, you've got a musical school over here, you've got a Big Lots over here, a family Chinese all-you-can-eat buffet right there kind of thing going on. And then all of a sudden, you throw this in the mix and big parties once in a while or not kind of thing. It's, there's just so many little tiny aspects that need to be thought of and, and taken to consideration in regards to how it's going to affect, I mean, you're not only going to affect all these little different things, but you're, you're not going to receive much business if you're getting a lot of folks that are like, well, this is going to affect us and why should we, why should we be giving you business if it's going to affect us in this kind of a manner in our area? I mean, I'm not 100% sure on where's a better location, but we would, we would honestly in our neighborhood would like to see it stay as peaceful and as, you know, family oriented as possible and keep our children safe. We've got people that ride their bikes up and through in that whole area and just different things. So it's, it's a lot of, in my opinion, it's a lot of little different things that weren't taken into consideration personally if I was a man to start a, start a business. I would have probably sat down and thought through, as a matter of fact, I probably would have jumped out of my car and taken a walk through the area. I would have walked all the way around the whole build, like back of the building. I would have went up and down the, the main roads that are coming in from Garfield's side because there's a loop, loop road with houses that are literally the same thing. There's like a, a town, or like a fire alley of like woods between two metal fences, literally on one side and then on the Woodward Avenue side as well. And so, and I mean, we've had, me and my best friend, family member here, cousin, we witnessed this summer, my birthday is June 3rd, and we witnessed this summer five different times. The first time, the second time this happened, we had about 30 individuals pull up, out like you would see if you ever saw the movie Need for Speed, how they all like pull up and start jumping out and talking to each other and flashing their lights, popping their hoods and doing donuts. And I'm talking not just regular donuts. Because if I jump in my vehicle, which is a Chevy Traverse, and I try and do donuts, you're not really doing much for donuts unless they're snow or ice. That being said, these were like, so there's just a lot, a lot going on there.
Okay. I'm going to interrupt you for a second. We have a three-minute time limit on speaking. You're well beyond that.
Awesome. Sorry about that.
Your group would like to assign you to talk and you be the only speaker.
Okay. Nope. I was just, I didn't know, I didn't realize about the time there, so God bless you all and thank you for listening.
Yeah. So in all interest of time, we limited to three minutes on speaking on topics, so.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Denise Jacobowski, same address, Woodward Avenue. I've witnessed what he was going to tell you. I'll just quickly tell you. Gone in 60 seconds, Fast and Furious. The one with all the different movies with Vin Diesel and stuff. Paul Walker, can't think of the name of it. But Fast and Furious, yeah. We had the first event that this occurred was at about 9:30 at night, and there was 30 different cars at least. They were a bunch of stupid teenagers and young adults doing like drag racing, street racing. And one of our neighbors that I believe is here, I'm not sure, was one of the three different calls that was made to the police department. Cops never came out. And that was just the first event. We got in our car and drove over, and as soon as we got there, every kid in their cars scattered. We drove out to the front. We happened to see a specific car that had been involved in this, sitting in the Wendy's parking lot with their seat laid back, laying down like they were trying to hide. This is just one example of what kind of stuff can be brought into a family environment. I live at the very back side of there, and I've gotten yelled at by my neighbors and the association I live with because in the past years I've blew my music in my own house. And I don't do that so much anymore. It's rude. And there is a sound ordinance and the cops, there's not enough police officers in Grand Traverse County to be able to man Cherryland Center for the five or six times, four or five times that we've had these drag races going on. And I have video proof of some of them. I recorded them and I've called two different times on it. I also, at 11:30 at night, was parked on the side of the street and I happened to be sat further back from the road, and I still managed to have my car dinged, like there's a dent in the side of my vehicle. They jumped in and hit us and jumped back out, and we don't know who or what it was. So those are just examples of bringing an alcoholic adult entertainment place into the picture will bring more of that to the neighborhood. Not to mention, the crime rate in our area is the highest in the city. I looked it up last night and we are in the dark purple area. I have a family down the street that is literally, every single person in the family is physically and mentally, emotionally disabled. I mean, like one leg is gone, cerebral palsy, autism, and they walk back and forth every single day to Big Lots. And it's not always at 2:00 in the afternoon. Sometimes it's at 10, 9, 10 at night.
11.
11. And they're walking down the road. My best friend's disabled daughter goes over and works A1 speed for her job. We're looking at family, neighborhood. That is why streeters more than likely went out. Harvest Stone's the location now. Why don't we want to bring another nightclub that close? I think what they should do is find another location that's not in such a demographical area of families, children, disabled, animals, pedestrians, and shoppers.
Okay. Thank you.
I am very concerned about it, and my mental health is determined by this too. I suffer anxiety and depression. This will just make it worse for a lot of people.
Okay.
So I hope you guys will vote against it. And one other real quick thing, I would love to see a family oriented thing go into those areas, like a bounce arena or a trampoline park.
Thank you.
Not a nightclub. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris Freeme, 1705 Woodward. I'm, I'm not going to add a whole lot to the impassioned, you know, words of my neighbors, Zach and Denise, and I think they kind of nailed it on the head. I really didn't even think about all the folks who live over at Goodwill, and that wasn't really my, you know, my problem with it. But they do mention the attracted nuisance of the parking lot, which has become, and I'm sure you're all aware, we've had the sheriffs out many times this summer dealing with drag racers and all that stuff. And I can't imagine it's going to get a whole lot better having, having a nightclub there. The one thing I wanted to add that they didn't add is, is the property is exactly 600 feet from our back porch and also from Forest Lane's back porches. We hear everything that goes on over there. I can hear two people talking outside their car, and you're not going to tell me any amount of soundproofing is going to change that. Also, it's a mall, never meant for a nightclub inside of it. I'm not sure how you retrofit something like that, but I've been inside that mall and I've been inside the internals, and I'll tell you what, it's made of paper. So I can't imagine, you know, any kind of soundproofing is going to change that. I, one, one thing I saw in the ticker article, I just want, I'm just going to finish with, I'm going to be really quick, is I know you look at, is this a harmonious and compatible thing to have with the surrounding territory? And I just want to go in record, this is not harmonious and this is not compatible with our neighborhood. Thank you.
I was not here to speak about High Tops specifically, but about Cherryland Center, so I guess I will riff off of this a little bit. We've been talking about redevelopment of Cherryland for a long time. I think it's been five years, Steve, since you did the visioning thing over at the Health Department.
Also state your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry. Carrie Yuli, 1397 Alexander Drive. I have a kiddo who is in the TC Phil Civic Orchestra, takes lessons over there, and I have worked in that plaza as well previously. And my concern is twofold. Number one, harmonious and compatible, whoever said that, that occurs to me as I see how close it is to these homes, but also from both an aesthetic and a safety point of view, I think it's critically important that before you do anything further there, I would encourage every one of you to take a drive-through there at night specifically. We've got kiddos walking back and forth on the backside of the building, and I, we've talked about activating the backside of a building, and I think it can be done, but it's clear to me as a parent that it needs to be done in a safe manner. And it's clear to me now that it needs to be done in a way that is respectful and works with a multi-use area. So please, I would encourage you all to take a drive-through there at night, walk around, see what it feels like to be there before you do anything further. I think that there's uses that fit that area. I'm excited to see it be revitalized, but we get one chance, let's do it right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Miriam Parker, 1707 Woodward Avenue. I'm asking that you vote no on a nightclub, okay? My question is for you, if you're going to have a High Top nightclub, are you going to live on Woodward Avenue?
Ma'am, this is public comment. It's really not a time for, it's just time for you to comment on what you really want to comment about.
If whoever's going to start this business, then they better come and move to Woodward Avenue and see what it's like to live over here, okay? So we're asking that you vote no on a nightclub. It is not a place for, for dancing or whatnot. We have enough of noises between the go-kart that you guys allowed coming into the mall, the planes, everything else, so please vote no on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're seeing nobody else coming forward for comment. We will go ahead and close public comment and move on to the review and approval of the agenda. John, I would suggest we bring our, now we're moving, item 6C, the High Tops, K-1 High Tops Site Plan Review Amendment is being tabled and removed from tonight's agenda. If anybody has any conflicts of interest, now would also be the time to state those as we get ready to move the agenda.
Sure. The only question I had about the agenda, I noticed in the back of the Planning Department report for the month that it mentioned that we may be reviewing some application of a BETA Housing Commission minor amendment at tonight's meeting, but I didn't see that on the agenda, so I don't know if that's something we're supposed to look at tonight or not.
Yeah, that was, that was an error. We were anticipating that it was going to be in the agenda, but it was not. That's being deferred most likely to the November meeting. So I was going to make that comment under our report, but.
And actually, I'm sorry. Thanks, Sean, for catching that. And also, under Other Business, I'd like to add, under Other Business, to discuss the possibility of changing our November meeting date. So if you can just make a note under Other Business to potentially change that meeting date.
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Support. Motion made and supported to approve the agenda as amended, which is removing item 6C and adding item A under Other Business. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is our minutes from our September 11th meeting. They're in your packet. Does anybody have any questions, comments, corrections they'd like to make to the minutes?
Make a motion, the minutes be approved.
Support. Motion made, supported to approve the minutes from September 11th as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Correspondents? John, I saw a pile of them on the desk tonight.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to apologize, these should have been included within the packet itself, but they've been entered in and they're actually on the website as well as, under the handouts. So we received since the packet when it came out, so we added to it as well. Right. So, so these are being, I just wanted to, these are, many of these I emailed out to you earlier, and this are just the hard copies. There are a couple of them that were added in at the end that we received this afternoon, including right before the meeting. So if we receive any more, we'll be sure to forward those on to you for your information.
Okay. Any other correspondence?
That's it for now.
Okay. Thank you. Reports, Molly, Town Board reports.
Couple things. The Town Board has been looking at rebranding Garfield Township. We had quite a discussion on it last night. The consultant came in with some very contemporary logos and different things, and the board kind of said, let's go back to the drawing board, so we're doing that. Since our last meeting, Chris Barshuff has been the new hire for the Township Manager's position. He should start next month. And the city of Traverse City has hired a new position. It's an economic development person who's going to work with the townships to collaborate from one township to another. I asked the question about Networks North and what are they doing, but they are a larger area. This is just within the county, so that's what we're talking about.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Molly? All right, good. Planning Commissioners, Bob, how about ZBA, any meetings?
Yes, we had a meeting, a repeat item for 1661 Lake Drive, which was a neighborhood dispute about a lady complaining the neighbor was draining his property onto hers. He continued to work, the city has issued him stop work orders and anything else, and he was still going on, so she, the neighbor brought her back to us and we withdrew all the permits he had and told him to stop and come back after he had his act together.
Okay. Thank you. Chris, Parks and Rec?
We had a meeting, not last night, but Monday night, and we made recommendations to the, to the Board of Trustees about the park budget for next year. And we also made a recommendation, staff had put together a selection of playground equipment for the, forgive me.
River East?
River East Park, yeah. And we made a recommendation based on the selections of the staff for some new playground equipment to be installed over there. So that, those are just different issues that'll be furthering our perks in Township.
All right, thank you. John, joint planning commissioners?
We haven't had any meetings lately. I believe we're on for next week.
Correct.
So I'll have a report.
It's at the governmental center.
Governmental center.
At our next meeting, I'll report what happens.
All right. Next item, 5C, is a staff report, Planning Department report, 2024-77, the Planning Department report for October 2024. John or Steve, which one?
Yes. So I hadn't mentioned that there was the one item on the top of page two regarding the Housing Commission project. As you recall, they had some, there were some issues related to the playground as part of Phase One, so they removed that. Those were some requirements that were, they were having to meet regarding the MISTHA financing of that project. They have since resolved those items with MISTHA, so they are going to be coming back at some point. We thought they might, because it's fairly minor nature, we thought that it may be on the agenda. It was just an oversight, we forgot to pull that from the report here, but they will be, because phasing plans are required to be reviewed by, as a minor amendment, they'll be coming to, most likely the November meeting to present that adjustment and basically putting that into Phase One.
Did they ever figure out if they actually needed to move, it was based on that high-pressure gas main and the depth of that, did they ever get a determination if they actually had to move it or not?
Well, they placed a berm in, in that location to buffer it, so it does, if there's some obstacle or something in the way from the gas main over to that, I think it was like 600 and some feet setback, it had to be, so.
It may end up coming to us later then, potentially.
Yeah, I would expect the November meeting, if, if not, maybe the December meeting, but it should be fairly minor, just basically it's revising that phasing to loop that Phase One, to loop the playground back in it. Yeah, they did provide a surety, performance guarantee, I think it was somewhere around $60,000 or $70,000, so that will, your action then will allow them to release that and they can go forward with their, their building plans for that playground. So that, there's the report there, just wanted to mention a couple other things. We were, both Steve and I were at the Michigan Association of Planning Conference last month, and we have some information that we will share with you at your study session later this month. Also, right before this meeting, we had an opportunity, there was an event at the new Traverse City Phil Harmonic, which is over at the Cherryland Center. They're basically the former rear end of the Kmart building there, and it's a beautiful facility. They've put a lot of effort into that, and I think it's going to be nice to have that type of community center there with the school and recital facility. And it's, it's, I think that along with the Curling Center kind of set the tone for the quality of the development that we hope to see continue on in that building. And that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, item A, Planning Department report, 2024-79, excuse me, Angel Care, Child Care, Church of the Living God SUP, and this is a public hearing. So John or Steve, when are you going to kick this off?
Steve's going to cover this. All right. Just to recap from the introduction, they proposed that Angel Care, Child Care is at the Church of the Living God on, at 14th, or 15, 14 Birmley, on the north side of Birmley, kind of in between Garfield and Keystone. When we looked at this, the introduction, there was some background to the application. About a year and a half ago, a different provider had put in for this application for, to do essentially the same thing, but just larger at this location, ultimately withdrew their application, so we had already looked at a similar type of application or the same use, but just with a different provider this time around. The reason it was withdrawn the last time was concerns over expense related to upgrading the building. I just wanted to remind planning, so we did talk back and forth with the applicant, and I also talked with someone connected to the like state fire review who was mentioned by the applicant. So ultimately, like anything building related would be under the building code or anything under state licensing, which allows
would be under the building code, or anything under state licensing, which a lot of this is related to, would be under the review of them getting a state license for this operation. So typically, we would not get into the details of that. Typically, how we would handle it is our standard sort of language of conditions of approval, that all agency reviews or other reviews must be complete and deemed compliant before permits are issued. So that's something typical. From what I can gather, it seems like they're on the right track for doing that, but I'm not a building inspector and cannot speak professionally to that. But that is still something required regardless of this process. We are just looking at the use. But otherwise, I think just for context, some of that was put in as attachments, but otherwise, we're looking at essentially the same thing that you saw at the introduction, and tonight is the public hearing for this.
Okay. Is the applicant here today?
All right.
Go ahead and like to tell us in the public, what you'd like to tell us before we open the public hearing.
Sure. Hi, my name is Kimberly Lindsay. I am the Director of Angel Care Childcare. We are looking at moving our center inside the Church of Living God. We had to do that. I know last time we had met, you had said there was some unfinished business, and you wanted to know more about the gates that would be going in. As far as the playground, I had marked off on the paper where it said space main, playground needed, needs gates. And then I got information back that you wanted to know how big the area was going to be, where the gates would be pedestrian, and we do have some, so lawnmowers can get in, so six-feet gates instead of the four-foot pedestrian ones. I do have copies of that if you'd like to see. I think I also sent one to Steve. I can't remember.
Making sure if it was in the packet. Otherwise, I might take it.
I have a couple if you want me to pass them around.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
So as you can see in that paper that I just sent you, we are looking at galvanized chain link, and we are going to have two playgrounds, one for the infant and toddler side and one for the preschool side. The reason we're doing that is because preschool has a different ratio than it does for infant and toddlers. So you have to have so many staff members for so many infants and toddlers and so many for preschool. So we're looking at two playground areas. So you can see that looks divided in the center. There would be a gate in the middle, so you can go in between the infants and toddler side, and then one for the opening in the back for the preschool, and then one for the opening in the front for the infant and toddler. On the two sides would be where the lawnmowers would be able to go in, because right now it's currently grass. That would be about 3,900 square feet each. We'd need 310 linear feet of gate. There would be two six-inch gates on the side for the lawnmowers and three pedestrian gates. And then we would not need to change their sign. I know that was another question.
Yes.
Yep.
So how will, will people just know that it's part of Church of Living God site?
Yep. So we're going to, they have a, the sign out there right now, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, what that sign looks like. There's lettering on it that we've talked with them, and I do have a representative from Church of Living God here as well, if you want to ask him any questions.
Because ultimately, like, anything, the sign would be an assigned, permit review anyway?
Permit.
Yeah, just to know that that's the monument sign for that site.
Yes.
As long as it's included within there, most likely can just amend that.
Yeah, absolutely. The letters come off, and we are just going to look at taking the letters and posting something about Angel Care on there. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
John, you had a question. Somebody came to us not so distant past on a similar proposal, and it was more of a question about sprinklers. Was it based on the size of the unit they wanted to do?
Yes. So the current applicant that we, that had previously looked into this, they were wanting to add 100 kids to their center, and if you add over 60, you have to have sprinkler system. If you're under 60, you do not. You just have to be within so many feet of a distance of the exit.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, that came up. We weren't sure about the answer.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody like to come forward and speak to the Childcare Center at Church of Living God? Feel free to do so. Just step up the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what you'd like to say.
Zachary Quitleyano. All I'd really like to say is, there's no such thing as a silent Christian, and God bless you and your ministries and the church and everybody that is part of the family over there. Just wanted to say, God bless you and Jesus loves you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else beating a path to the microphone, so at this point, we'll close public hearing. Bring it back to the board for any comments, questions, or discussion. Go ahead, John.
Just looking at the playground diagram, has staff seen this before?
I did, yeah.
And does this comply with all of the?
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, it was an error that it was not in the packet. I'd included an email that addressed the other question that you had, but sorry, I forgot to include the playground thing in there too. But yeah, we had a chance to look at that. I think that addressed, just getting details, actually, looking at the draft motion, I think they just addressed both of the items that we put as potential items to address. I think they just addressed both of them.
Yeah, I think they addressed them too, and I just wanted to verify, are you, is staff satisfied?
Yeah, I think.
They addressed them successfully.
Yeah, I think that meets the intention of, the playground thing, this is related to one of the requirements in Section 720, which is all outdoor areas used for the care and supervision of patrons shall have appropriate fencing for the safety of the children. It actually says in the group daycare home, that's how it states it in the ordinance, it is a childcare center, not a group daycare home, consisting of minimum six-foot-high privacy fence along the area joining another residence, and a minimum four-foot-high fence in the remaining area devoted to daycare area. Notably, this is on the side of the building. There is a residence further away. It's a lar, the church is on a larger piece of property, so it's several hundred feet away to the boundary of the next residence. It is on the side that faces them, but it's, there's a significant buffer distance, and there's some amount of both landscaping and I think some other natural features in between that on both properties. So it didn't seem like it was going to cause any issues.
Have we heard anything from that property owner?
I did not hear anything from that property owner. They would have received a notice of this public hearing, so.
I'm prepared to make the motion.
All right.
Although I think I'll modify it by deleting subject to the following additional information. And also, Joe, you'd mentioned potential consideration of a different date for a November meeting.
Yeah, I would just, just make the motion at our September, our November meeting without a specific date.
Very good. So, motion to direct staff to prepare findings of fact for application SUP 2024-03, submitted by Angel Childcare for a special use permit for a childcare center at parcel 05026014-10 at 1514 Brimley Road for the Planning Commission regular meeting in November.
Support.
All right. Motion made and supported to direct staff to prepare findings of fact for the Angel Care Childcare facility and present those at our November meeting. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. See you in November. All right. Moving on, we've removed item C, so we move on to item D, the tower.
We're on B.
I'm sorry, I worked too fast. I want to check them out. Apologize. Item B, Planning Department report 2024-80, French Manor La Frayure SUP amendment, and we have a findings of fact in our packet tonight.
Yes, so this is a special use permit application. It's a major amendment. And the introduction was held back in August, and then in September, had the public hearing. And the, at that public hearing meeting, the Planning Commission directed staff to prepare findings of fact. So we have done that in your packet in the report. This is for the location at 3090 La Frayure Road for the French Manor, French Manor La Frayure. It's adding two additions to the building. It'll, a total of 3,648 feet to the existing facility. There are a couple of very minor items related to the dumpster enclosure. Those have been addressed by the applicant, and everything seems to be in order in terms of the site plan and meeting all the requirements and standards for a special use permit.
Staff, or, excuse me, the board, anybody have any questions about the findings presented? It looks like they've all been met, from what I'm seeing in here, so. John?
I don't have any objection to any of the findings, except I would suggest, I think, on item nine, that the last sentence come out, it mentions as part of the application that the applicant determined the proposed development will not overburden, but it's not really up to the applicant to make that determination. That's up to whoever the owner of the easement is, if they choose to challenge it. So you don't need to say something that's, that's not, it's not necessary to cover it and.
Sure.
And it's not technically accurate.
So we could strike that last sentence there under number nine, findings of fact on page six of seven.
Yeah.
Striking the last sentence there as part of the application, dot, dot, dot.
Okay. With, with that, unless there's other, I'd be prepared to make a motion. I'll, I'll move that the findings of fact for application SUP 1990-07-A as presented in the Planning Department report 2024-80, being made part of this motion, as modified this evening, be adopted.
Support.
Motion made and supported that the SUP 1990-07, the findings of fact be approved as presented, with striking that last sentence of item nine. So any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Okay. I can make the next motion too, if you want.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll move that application SUP-1990-07-A be approved, subject to the following conditions, which are one through three, as indicated in Planning Department report 2024-80.
Support.
Motion made and supported to, now to approve the findings of fact, that the app, will approve the application as presented. So any further discussion on that motion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right, moving on. Now we get to go item D, Tower Wireless Communication Facility SUP Follow-up Number Three. Been waiting for some information, John, on this one. Any, any communication from?
Basically, still waiting. We have at least, they've at least acknowledged every time we have reminded them, if they have any updated information. I think their last communication we had, they were trying to work with the property owner to move the proposed location of the tower on that site to meet our ordinance, but hadn't gotten anything yet. They've been notified of the provision in the ordinance that if you fail to proceed meaningfully towards application completed, completion, or decision within 120 days, then it expires. They've been notified of this. So that 120 days from when it was originally tabled will be November 6. So they are aware of this. And also, depending on when our pending discussion of when the November Planning Commission meeting is, perhaps at the next meeting, we will, in the past, when something has expired, we've acknowledged that it has done that. So that, if they don't have any additional information by then, we may be doing that at the next meeting.
But they have at least acknowledged that we've.
They've at least, they've at least heard our communication, so they, they are aware. It seems like something they're trying to work out, but seems like the negotiations or whatever they would have to do is proving a little challenging on their end, so.
All right, so no action needed on that one, right?
No action, correct.
Okay. Well, moving on to new business, we have item seven, which is Planning Department report 2024-83, Cherryland Center Comprehensive Development Plan, Conceptual Review. Who's going to tackle this one?
Yes. So this is a little bit unusual in terms of using the conceptual review approach, but I thought this would be probably most appropriate as kind of an intro and discussion regarding this particular plan, because it's, it's a little bit unique. So the, this is a comprehensive development plan for the Cherryland Center site. So as Cherryland Center, which was established back in the 1970s as an enclosed mall, and then it was converted to a strip center back in the late 90s, when it was, had that conversion to, from an enclosed mall to a strip center, there, that was the last time that a comprehensive development plan was done for the site. There really wasn't any much activity on that site since that time period. And in the Planned Shopping Center District, the CP Planned Shopping Center District, which goes over this entire area, is, does allow for, or allow for the Planning Commission to require the comprehensive development plan for the entire center. So we thought it would be appropriate in terms of updating that site plan, because there's a lot of activity. Just in our, page one of our report there, you can see from basically 2020 onwards, we've had a lot of different things happen out there. We've had the Wendy's has gone in, Burger King has been completely redone, Big B Coffee was established, the Curling Center, which purchased the former Kmart building, was constructed, Seven Brew Coffee went in, K1 Kart Racing went in, there's the Outlet, 1712 South Garfield Outlet, which is where the Starbucks is going in. There's also three other units that are part of that. Also, the Traverse City Philharmonic plan as well, that's, that's gone in the back end of the former Kmart. So we've had a lot of activity, and we felt that there's, needs to be at some point here an updating of that comprehensive development plan as a tool to really ensure that there's compatibility of uses here. I think everybody agrees that the site needs some new investment and some new uses established. We want to ensure that there's some mechanism, that there's some compatibility and that it, it all kind of works together. We have three primary owners on that site, but it all looks like one big building. There's kind of the Kmart building, which is owned by the Curling Center. There's Dr. Walls, who owns the Sears building, and then there's the Yonkers Big Lots, which is all under the Cherryland Center LLC that Kumar owns, that includes some, some of the parcels around that. In order to get this all kind of coordinated, this comprehensive development plan is, I think, essential, particularly when we look at any type of infill development, or anything that does additions to the building that's there, or maybe has new construction on the site. So this would be the mechanism on which to evaluate those, to ensure that there's site circulation, that there's access, that there's pedestrian ways to get around there, that there's sufficient things like lighting and so forth. So this is essentially that, that mechanism to move this forward. So that, that plan, which is, so it's kind of a unique thing tied to the Planned Shopping Center District. Fortunately, the plan has been developed. Most of the owners out there have been using the same engineering firm, so it's kind of been able to piece everything together. And Gosling Zubek has prepared, prepared this overall plan for that particular site. And Steve, maybe you can bring up the actual site plan, so people in the audience can see it as well. But the important part of this plan is, it's really just acknowledging what's pretty much out there existing at this time. So it's not necessarily proposing anything. We wanted to kind of ensure that there's a baseline for what in terms of, that's out there from a built standpoint. It's probably going to be pretty hard to read.
Yeah, sorry, this is, unless we zoom in on parts of it.
Yeah, that's fine. So this is essentially what's kind of out there as of today, you know, October 9, 2024. As new proposals come in, it'll be important to see how those fit in, whether they're in, inside the existing building, or some type of an addition, or new type of structure on that particular site. The other component to that. The other component to this is not necessarily under the purview of the planning commission, but there is this reciprocal access agreement that was established many years ago, when this was a mall, when there was two primary owners. And that reciprocal easement agreement still exists today, and still applies to those properties, because it's essential that that mechanism be in place, that a private agreement between the property owners there, but assures certain access. For instance, the Big B Coffee doesn't have any driveway onto South Airport Road, so it needs that easement agreement to get access. Same thing with like the Wendy's and so forth, there's only six driveways, seven, I guess, if you include the Burger King, which is a right in, right out. Those aren't intended to change at all, so the agreement is really essential to ensure that there is good flow through this site. The way it's laid out right now, it works fairly good. We want to make sure that those drives that are in there are maintained in some form, so that there's good flow for traffic in and out of that site. So I think there's this sense that it, a lot of development can occur there, infill development, because a lot of people see blank parking spaces, we want to make sure that there's understanding that as these new uses are now populating these buildings, those parking lots will start filling up, so we have to make sure that we accommodate that, ensure that there is sufficient parking for any new uses that are included in the site. The uses really depend on the, the type of use is, will determine the type of parking needs that are required in the zoning ordinance. So the intent is, at this point, we've had a chance to review this, there are, in addition to kind of the existing site conditions, there are some options for looking at future uses in here, I think those are for, at this point, more for illustration, but to see that, you know, there is thoughts and ideas of including other uses on there. We wanted to make sure at this point that there's this comprehensive development plan in place first. The reason I advise the applicant to go through the conceptual review is I thought, since the site plan review process is essentially a one-meeting type of situation, there isn't necessarily like a public hearing requirement or anything like that, wanted to give opportunity for the planning commission to look at this, and see if there are any issues, or concerns, or anything that should be addressed in the plan, in terms of how this site goes forward in terms of its redevelopment and repurpose in certain areas. So I just kind of want to give you that overview, and if you have any thoughts and ideas on, and some feedback, at this point, if they're, with the conceptual review, it's not binding, or not taking any action tonight, it's just a matter of feedback. I do, I see Bob is here, so he can have any, he's involved in preparing this, the plan, so if there are any specific questions, or anything related to the plan itself.
Good evening, Bob Verche with Gosling Zuback, just as John mentioned, we're the engineer that's worked on the plan for Cherryland Center, and Steve Holm is representing them, he's here tonight as well, so if there's any specific questions for them, he'd be the one to talk to about that. But as John mentioned, we've been able to work with the three primary owners of the Cherryland Center, and as their sites have kind of been reviewed and come online, and it's kind of spurred the kick that's needed to get that revitalized, and, you know, a viable development for the community, so, yeah, we're just trying to keep things moving. I know there's others that have been here with conceptual reviews earlier this summer, and I know they're anxious to get moving along, too, so kind of working hand in hand with everybody, trying to move things along, so.
Well, just a couple of questions, a couple of comments, I guess. I think in general, I'm always in favor of conceptual reviews, I think that's a good thing for us to look at, it's, I had a hard time making heads or tails of what we're looking at tonight, because there's three owners, and I guess there's only one that's coming forward to ask for a conceptual review of something, and I'm having a hard time even fully understand it yet, but it is seemingly silent about what the other owners might want to be doing, and it seems like everything is interconnected, and what might make sense all depends on what else is going on, what it's near. We heard tonight, and I think many of us have already been feeling very strongly, that anything that goes on, if we're going to do site plan approval, it does have to be harmonious and compatible, and some of the things that may be proposed to go on facing to the west or to the north, I think are going to be very challenging to at least succeed in meeting the compatible and harmonious threshold, some things could do it, but some things I don't think would be able to do it. I also had a question about, I think it was on page six of the site plan, I just can't read the legend perhaps, but I think the third item down, it says future housing development, but I couldn't figure out where on this plan that is supposed to maybe go.
So there's a little area.
I'll get that.
Okay.
On page six?
Yeah, well, it's in the legend, but I couldn't see it on the map, but it's probably there, I just couldn't see it.
Yeah, it's rare.
They'll show it on the map, it's this area here.
Okay.
Yeah, the light.
A bit better, the blue. Oh, the colors are much better on the screen than they are printed out.
Yeah.
Apologize, I think sometimes the printer prints stuff a little different than what it looks like on the computer, but, but yeah, that's, that's an area that Cherryland Center LLC has identified as potential opportunity for some type of residential use that, you know, compatible with the existing neighborhood that's there. There, it's a small area, I mean, it would be limited to whatever could fit there and meet the ordinance, so. There's no idea yet of what kind of parking, I mean, I think the parking might kind of play into what's there already, but, you know, there really hasn't been any stab at what a site might look like, and what kind of footprint that building might be.
You know, one of the things about that, that we have in the ordinance is there's a requirement for this 50-foot wide vegetative strip of land, and that was to buffer any of the development in this, in the planned shopping center district, when it abuts a residential area. So this is kind of a thing we'll just have to evaluate, should this come forward in more, in a more formal process, that vegetative buffer, which is, you go out there, that's that stretch that runs between the driveway, and let's say Woodward Avenue, or along the north side, between the driveway and the backyards of people up on Forest Lane. So there's that requirement there in the ordinance that's in there. The other thing, too, is we really want to be cognizant of traffic flow through the site, it's a big site, and so how that works through here is going to be really critical to ensure that it has a natural flow through that area. There may be some ways, some mechanisms that could maybe be established, maybe there needs to be actually some formal easements in some, in some locations, just to ensure that those are kind of dedicated laneways or driveways through the site, so that there's just good traffic flow, because it's, I think that's one of the critical parts to making sure that this is an effective layout of land use.
For now.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
Just a little follow-up on John's question about the owners on the site, are they, we have no communication with one of the owners, is that right? And there's only one that's really wanting to develop, bring forward some kind of a plan for the parking area, and how those things might interconnect? Is there one, or are?
No, we've, we've had good communication with, amongst all three. We actually had a meeting last year where we, actually, they were in this room right here, where we had representatives from all three parties, and I think they, everything's working along fairly well, I'm just, that's why I wanted to make sure this was in place, because we want to make sure they're not bumping into each other, or creating conflicts, particularly when they go beyond that building envelope, is critical. But no, I think there's been good communication of recent, so we want to keep that going, and we think this kind of lays out a plan. Ideally, this should be able to be a plan that they all could use, and I think that's one of the things that we wanted to ensure, is that there, this could really be a massive, each one of them had their own engineering firms coming in and doing their own site plans and all that stuff. Because while the plan itself breaks down, we've kind of been looking at parking associated with each use, but ultimately, we have to evaluate that, because there's the, the idea is that this is parking, even though it's on different properties, there is an easement agreement there that allows for traffic, or parking to occur, you know, across the border, and essentially across the property line, so if somebody, you know, parks, you know, at the Curling Center, and they go to the Curling Center, and then they decide to go to Asian Buffet and have dinner, that, you know, they can leave their car there, they don't, you know, it's not like it's, it's all, it's all kind of one, just as it was when it was a, kind of a one single shopping center owned by a single developer, so.
Your understanding was that all of the owners are agreeing that they need to have one plan, and they're all agreeing that it needs to address those, the traffic flows, and?
I think we're getting, we're starting that path, this is the, this is, well, I think there is the current reciprocal agreement, easement agreement, I think it needs to be updated, I mean, that's our viewpoint, and we hope that, that, we think that's a critical part to it. Our, the site plan itself is the one I know that the Township Planning Commission can control and ensure that's in place, so we want to at least have that, and it's our hope that that reciprocal easement, there's, it's, it's out of date, it needs to be updated. For instance, it says that only, I believe it has a reference that only commercial uses can be used in that location, and we know that there are nonuses in there, non-commercial uses in there already, so we just want to make sure, you know, and that can ultimately address not just cross-access and parking, shared parking, it can address issues like how, you know, they can coordinate snow removal, ensuring that the stormwater system is maintained, lighting and so forth, maintenance of the asphalt parking lot, striping, and all those things. So we're hopeful that they'll eventually kind of get that agreement updated and going, we're definitely, they're not there yet, but at least this, I think, is a starting point for that.
So if we have something in place, and it just continues to be kind of a living document, for a while, things can be amended here and there?
Yeah, that's what I'd like to see, is this would be the, so if somebody was changing something, they would come back with this site plan to work and adjust this, so we can kind of fill this in as we go along, as a, because right now, some of the plans that you've been seeing are just isolated to one building, like for instance, when you saw the Curling Center, you just saw a portion of that, you know, Traverse City Philharmonic provided a site plan, it was just the back end. What we want to see is to see, you know, we talk about harmonious, how uses work together, it's important to see the context of the whole site.
John, you're always talking about the three owners for the overall plan, but the, I count seven outlots that have seven different owners, would they be part of this comprehensive plan as well, or should they be included, or does it apply because they're not part of the building itself?
Yeah, there's, oh yeah, ownership map is a good illustration. Yeah. So this is, it gets a little gray here, because the reciprocal easement agreement does not necessarily include all of those. Some of them are definitely, are, for instance, the Wendy's and the Starbucks, those were split off from the main parcel, that's the yellow parcel, which is owned by the Curling Center, so they're a part of that. Margarita's Grill, which is the, kind of the pinkish one down to the south of the red site, where Wendy's is at, I'm not sure if that one is included in that reciprocal easement agreement or not. We've considered it all to be part of Cherryland Center overall, from what we can see from the original planned shopping center zoning. It's going to be important for those owners to work with these other uses, like the Burger King is the green one at the corner, to the west of that, kind of the other green one is the Big B, and then Seven Brew. They rely on the access points that are owned by the other owners, so the other owners actually have that control, so for them to put the easement agreement in place, they also have to have some relationship with those owners of the outlots. The other one that's kind of a, an odd one, is where the Qdoba is at, and that's the orange one in the corner there. From my understanding, I think there was probably a split at one point, so even though it's showing one ownership, when you look at the zoning map, the actual corner is local commercial, so it was almost at one point, it, I don't think it was ever really part of the original Cherryland Center area. And then it was tied together when Family Video had that one parcel that's there right now, where the Jimmy John's and the Qdoba.
It's one legal parcel with split zoning.
Yeah, but we still kind of consider that essentially all of the planned shopping center.
It would make sense, that's the only outlot that has its own curb cut, on a separate entrance, you know?
Yes.
Okay, all the other ones, all the other outlots have to access Cherryland Center to get to them, so I'm a little surprised they don't have, they're not involved in a reciprocating agreement of some sort, so.
Some of them are, some of them they're not, like the Wendy's and the Starbucks, those sites definitely are, because those were, they were part of it, and then they were established off of that one.
And most recently split off.
Yes.
But the Burger King's been there for decades.
Yes, same thing with the.
The Margarita Grill, through its various names over the years, has been there for a long time, so.
Yeah.
I think one more coffee shop, and we ought to name it the Cherryland Coffee Center, instead of, my gosh, you know, I didn't know there was that much demand for coffee, but I just, you know, I'd like to see, as we move through, this is a great start, and I like to hear we have cooperation from more than just one owner, to Molly's point, that, you know, maybe we find out where we stand with these other seven owners, you know?
Yeah, and I think we've seen, or what we've kind of foreseen, the reciprocal agreement, even if the township's not party to it specifically from a legal perspective, but to cover things like the four kind of main areas I've always thought of were shared stormwater, so some of these have underground stormwater, some of them are tied into the main stormwater that goes all the way to the back corner, which is most of the site there, it goes back to that corner. Shared stormwater, the shared entrances, so like John was saying earlier, a lot of these outlots, other than Burger King, have their entrance as part of the site itself, and not a separate curb cut, and that is, for access management, is a good practice for that. So they should be part of at least like a reciprocal access agreement, if that's part of that agreement, that would make a lot of sense. Shared ingress and egress throughout the site, so that not only it's access to the main roads, but throughout the site, shared parking where it's appropriate, and then shared signage, if they come up with a shared signage system, because we've seen a couple applications for standalone signs, and we've reiterated to them that this is part of the Cherryland Center, there's shared signage, and we would anticipate that type of application, and not standalone freestanding signs for everything that's out there.
Yeah, as busy as that map is, it's nice to actually see the ownership, it's a little, probably the clearest way we've been able to look at the ownership of the property.
the property.
Mm-hmm.
It's complicated, so.
Couple of things, I'd be interested in seeing as this evolves. I see that there are the existing sidewalks shown and some proposed sidewalks shown, but I think a more intentional plan for the whole development of sidewalks and pedestrian ways and maybe just a matter of setting aside a separate drawing to communicate ultimate, I mean, there's just a couple of areas where I see some lack of connection, Margarita's Grill being one of them. I'm not sure why there's not at least an intent to show a future sidewalk along Garfield. But certainly the walkability of the development, I think, is really important as a part of a master plan. And then I'm not sure, you know, Steve and John, to what extent we can, but I'd certainly like to see more intentional addition of green space to break up the parking lots. Again, as, so recognizing that I think this is a plan for when certain areas are redeveloped, then that's when that would be implemented, when certain parking areas associated with redevelopment occurs, then we can point to it and say, oh, well, we, we were anticipating there would be some more green space with redevelopment of this portion. But that, that would be an aspect I'd like to see more of. And then, I mean, there's really, there's the one identified residential, I don't know, there's one new, new use area, I'm sorry, actually I'm seeing just now, I was about to ask the question, but in parentheses, Bob, you've shown hotel. So you are saying kind of what kind of use developers expecting to, to put in there. So that's great. And that's, you know, those are my thoughts right now.
Just want to mention on the, you mentioned like the green space, there are landscape islands. For instance, when K1 went in, they added some islands in there. The curling center, some of those were deferred. They will have, they have until I believe May of next year to get those in. They, they're going to have to do their landscaping. It's also important because there wasn't really that many landscape islands in there. There was a lot of striped islands and I think those are going to be essential, for instance, on the area behind Wendy's and Starbucks there where those rows come in. I think having formal landscape islands are curved up like that are going to be important because it's going to, you know, try to create more of drives so there's not a lot of crusts, people just kind of driving any which way, but really funnels people into direct areas and so that turning movements and we don't have people bumping into each other with their cars out there. But that will add, you know, the trees and hopefully soften the area a little bit more. I mean, I think that's been one of the challenges historically when you looked across that parking lot, you know, there you saw these large, large, long expanses of asphalt and as we go through these, as new uses come in, they'll have to meet our island, parking lot landscape island requirements, just like K1 did, creating those curved areas with trees and so forth. So I think it serves to soften it and, but also to direct vehicles in the appropriate areas so we don't have people crisscrossing every which way.
Yeah.
I guess I'd, another thought about potential uses, the other yellow areas that say new uses, as I read that, that's, those are proposed uses in already existing buildings. Is that, am I reading that right?
Correct.
Yeah, so it'd be great if the buildings get used. What the proposed uses are, that's going to be the $64,000 question probably at some point. As far as a potential hotel somewhere, I, I guess I haven't given that a ton of thought. That may fit. If it does though, where you're showing it, the hotel itself is going to eat up a chunk of parking and then there's going to need to be probably some dedicated parking that that hotel is going to expect to have. So if something like that were to happen, that's going to have ripple effects on all the rest of the development as far as what sort of parking is still available for the non-hotel uses. So we're going to have to be real mindful of, of all of that. It's like the hip bone's connected to the thigh bone.
So yeah, that's, I mean, that's probably the biggest thing we spent the most time looking at on this overall plan. Just because I think, you know, the, the first thing that spurred it was the talk about the Two Brothers Dog Park and Tap House Cafe development and that's kind of the, was the impetus behind this being, you know, get going. So, and that, the reasoning, because it was going to eat up some parking to put the, the grass, the fake grass for the dog area in. So that was, you know, John, Steve, they needed to understand what are the, what are the ripple effects of parking that starts to get eaten up by new construction in, on the site, so. And then there's discussion about hotels and stuff like that. So we, and the one whole last plan addresses, you know, parking in a comprehensive manner to show the uses that are there now, what happens when a ho, if a hotel goes in, what happens with Two Brothers project and, you know, we can show that the parking is satisfied in a couple different numbers of ways that the ordinance lays out, so. So yeah, we're, we recognize parking as a, is a major component of that and it's addressed. Just to kind of go back a little bit to Molly's questions about the three owners. So they've, we, we had a meeting in August at, at the township, John and Steve and Eric was there, he's not an owner, but he's looking to become part of the, the group as far as a tenant with the, the Two Parks project. And Steve was there and Dr. Walls was there. So everybody's been there, representatives from the Curling Club. I've talked to them in the last week several times, so the, the three main owners are communicating and talking and, you know, the plan reflects exactly what's been approved for their redevelopment. So, you know, even though there's not any new site development per se for Dr. Walls' project for the K1, other than the curve islands that went in, there's no new site development for the Curling Club shown, other than what their plans had identified that was deferred with the sidewalks and whatnot, so. So that, everybody's pieces of the puzzle are reflected as they've already been approved, so. And then these other potential items that are shown are what might come. One of them is very imminent with Two Brothers and we can show that that fits in well to the site and the, the hotel is just, at this point's conceptual, so. But, you know, if something hap, and I, I'm not a real estate agent or developer, but, you know, when those guys are looking at who might come there, what, you know, whatever brand they're talking to has their own requirements and so, you know, it might be massaged and, but there is, there would be a defined area and dedicated parking to that piece of the site, as John mentioned, so. And that, you know, that's just a representation of what it could look like. So then if there is a, you know, a hard proposal that comes down from a, a brand that wants to build, then when they present a site plan, it gives John and Steve the tools to evaluate how it fits in with the rest of the ordinance, so.
Any other comments or questions from the board? At this point? We've been looking for something for a long time, so this is a good start for sure. I guess what are the next steps, John? We're just, no real action tonight, which is.
Yeah, so we would expect them to come back with the actual application for looking for approval from the planning commission on the, on the plan and going forward. I think one of the conditions, we want to make sure that there's, that those agreements that address those other areas and those will have to be a condition of that approval, those will have to be, that we realize that even though those are legal private agreements, those things are often that we do require with other developments and so forth. For instance, you know, we have private road regulations in the zoning ordinance and so forth and it's, this is a, this is similar to that because there are, the way these parcels are configured, they don't have the adequate frontage to stand alone. For instance, like when you actually look at like the Sears property, actually the frontage is very limited on South Airport. It does have, I guess you could call it frontage on Woodward Avenue, but technically that's a required buffer, so there is no access, vehicular access that's available on that side. So these type, the, these types of agreements are really important to ensure that they're still meeting the, the requirements of the zoning ordinance. That's why the township regulates things like private roads, requires maintenance agreements to be established for those private roads and so forth, ensuring that as development occurs, that it's done in a coordinated manner, that's what the intent of having the zoning in place. So that, those agreements are going to have to be, be a part of the approval of the plan, ensure that those are established at some point here as a, as a condition of the approval. But we would expect that the applicant, applicants in this case could return back with a formal plan for consideration for approval by the planning commission.
That's why I brought up those seven outbuildings, it was reminiscent of last month when we were working on French Manor and, and one of the people using that shared drive, you know, we, we discovered that actually was a sunset date on a shared drive access. It seemed a little odd to us, but it's not, it's not an agreement with the township, it's an agreement between those owners, but I think we need to see that before we move forward because they obviously have to coexist to, to, to be there. So you can't get the Wendy's without using Yonkers driveway, so to speak. So it's got to be a, got to be an agreement there sometime, so. All right, thank you. Hope there's no other comments or questions, thank you very much, we'll move on.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Someone?
Sure. Is he part of your group?
Yeah, Eric's with, he's with the Two Brothers Dog Park Cafe.
Okay, all right.
I just want to provide some quick context real quick, just because we'll be seeing a bit of each other over the next few months.
Amen, amen.
Yep, so Eric Engel, 1412 Northwest Silver Lake Road. So we started this journey in June with y'all, doing our conceptual review initially. And from that conceptual review, just to do a quick history lesson, from that conceptual review, we discussed, you know, since we're going to use up parking, it's probably time to, to decide and figure out and build this plan, so not everyone goes and uses all the parking and we have a conundrum on our hands. Makes sense, totally get it. And we have been diligently working since June to build this plan. And thank you to Cherryland LLC for financing, building this plan out and, and closing this gap. In regards to Two Brothers, what, the concept of that is a dog park cafe. The tap house is for non-alcoholic, non-alcoholic drinks, but it's a, a family center to bring in dogs, bring in families together and enjoy the space indoors and outdoors with your canine friends. Very growing and common concept, many of them in Grand Rapids and Detroit. And where we are right now is we have our detailed architectural designs, Cunningham and Limp is on board and very excited to build this community space. So that's what's driving us forward on getting this plan in place. My two asks of this group to consider as you guys ponder this is, number one, I do understand that building that reciprocal agreement will take some time, probably lawyers, probably discussions. As you guys look at that, you know, this plan has been a requirement for us to do a site review. So I do ask that you guys consider to, you know, create a date for them to get that in place, but not necessarily block our, block our site review for those legal agreements to get in place. I understand the value of that and I understand why you want to have it, but at the same time, I also understand the time that'll take for those lawyers to have those negotiations. So that's my first request. My second request and a little bit of concern as we talk about these plans is, you know, you mentioned there's a few areas without sidewalks. I think that'll be a little bit difficult. I'm curious on how to get those previous owners to build that out. So I do ask that you guys think about that when you talk about, you know, whether you review or approve a plan, specifically because it just impacts our timing of our potential site review with you. And the last piece of context for you guys is, you know, we have members of the community excited for this concept, paying members. We have local trainers lined up for next year. We have artists and local retail shops lined up to partner with us. So we have a lot of excited community members. Yes, it is dependent on our site review and the comments and the feedback, but I just want to give you a context of, you know, we are lining up the community and we are, we're excited to build this concept. So any delays does, does impact that, well. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, nothing else on the conceptual review from anybody? We'll move on to item eight, which is public comment. This is our second public comment of the evening. If anybody would like to address anything that they've not already talked about, you know, be free to, feel free to come up and state your name and address for the record and listen to what you've got to say. I don't see everybody running to the microphone, so.
I'll keep it short. Zachary Quillianal, 1711 Woodward Avenue. Just kind of wanted to actually make mention, as you're looking at the layout in this map, this is to go with everything that's been, been talked about and communicated. Being a homeowner over on that back corner where you see like the sky blue and that dark green line, all along Woodward Avenue, okay, so going up that entire outer edge of like an octagon, all the way from one entrance and exit over here to like the Qdoba area, we've, the, the effects of, of a lot of this layout and how you guys are talking about plannings and stuff like that, I just wanted to bring it to the attention that for part of the issue that's been going on is people are using that outer drive to bypass South Airport or would be Garfield and, Garfield and South Airport's light there, intersection light there. So when things are getting kind of heavy or backed up, we've got.
Fifteen twenty five.
I could sit, I could sit and look out my window because I'm on the second floor and look out and see, especially during the fall, and, you know, three, four, or five cars every, every 10 minutes or, or more, you know, just zoom, 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 like, like it's becoming like an actual road. And that's not what it is. It's meant for people who are coming in to park and, and go into businesses and things of that nature. As far as future endeavors, people who might want to put in a business that requires sounding and stuff like that, if you look at some other examples in town, you have Walmart, for instance, when they wanted to put Walmart in, there are residents literally right there next to their parking lot in their building. They put up that huge brick wall. Now, there, there are some, some ways and things and thoughts moving forward in the future that they can think about doing as far as that's concerned along that back outer, outer edge. Right now, there's currently a chain link fence that's kind of been torn down and has fallen apart and things of that nature. So I just wanted to kind of bring some of these things up that did not get mentioned because it might be a benefit to help moving forward with other, other, you know, considerations and businesses that come to you and say, hey, you know, and so for instance, High Tops, you know, if, if they really wanted to be put in there, they could do something like, hey, we're, we're willing to pay for and, and get, if, if it's approved, a brick wall to be put up around for soundproof, for zoning and things of that nature. So just wanted to kind of mention some of those things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seventeen eleven Woodward Avenue, Denise. I just had a quick question. On the backside there where the drain off is, where they push all the snow, it's directly out my back door, yeah, the bowl. I'm just concerned because we have had some dirt bikers going in there and Terry and tearing it up, and if there is any way, until something is done to, you know, everything's accomplished and everything is done, is there any way that that fence could get put back up? Because we have had some pretty questionable stuff over there, and they've been driving right up next to the edge of our fence there, and it's, it's very disruptive and rude, and also, the backside, there's the fence along the backside of the parking lot there, from what I understood, from the end of Woodward Avenue where Floresta meets up, there's a gap there, there's a lady that lives in a trailer, and then there's our houses in the yellow townhouses, Kensington Park East, where there's a fenced-in area, and it says personnel, authorized personnel only, and then the backside of those houses, and all the way down to Garfield where it's all fenced in with the lock gates locked, from what I understood, that is a easement for, in back in the 50s, I believe, it was like alleys, so I'm just wondering, what is going on with that in the discussion? Yes, I'm just wondering, because our neighbors have made some paths out the back of our houses there where they walk the dogs and stuff, and there's neighboring units over across in the little, I can't remember the name of that area there, I think, the little area, Forest Lane or whatever? I just want to make sure that we don't overlook all of that, and keeping the trees, because it's already havoc with the airport and all the trees gone, and I know the trees help buffer the sound, I just don't want to see us do all this development and take all of that nature out. I just want to see that the drain off, the bowl there, can be utilized for what it's for, it's for drain off for snow.
Maybe better signage.
And maybe make a, something that can, the rules of what the back of the Cherryland Center is for driving, it sucks that when you're sitting there and you see 15 cars using it like it's a bypass, there needs to be some signage, and we were told by, I believe this gentleman here, you work, you were working in the Yonkers and stuff, no, well, there was one gentleman we talked to, that said that is technically private property, so people sitting and parking in their cars and doing unexplainable acts of, there was one incident where we were told there was a girl doing prostitution, out in the back there a few months ago, repeatedly, so I just want to put some signage up that puts it up as, this isn't allowed, this isn't allowed.
No loitering.
No loitering, no drive-through.
All right.
Until this is all done, so.
Thank you.
There can be some sanity and serenity.
Appreciate your comments, thank you.
Resolution, yes, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments.
Oh, and also my condolences for your family member that passed away, he was a teacher at Central High School, John McManus or something.
Senator, Senator George McManus.
Yes, he used to be a teacher at Central when I was in Sloan.
No, no, you're, you're thinking of.
No, it was a different brother.
It's a different brother.
Different one, not the same person.
Okay.
All right, any other public, any good comments anybody we got to make? Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and close that public comment, and take it on to other business, are, we have one, I believe, one planned meeting in November, correct?
Yeah, there's no study session in November or December, so it's just your regular meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, November 13th.
Yeah, Wednesday, the 13th is our meeting scheduled, and there's a regional planning get-together that's held every year, and I know John goes, I usually go, I think Molly's gone several times, and, and you usually go, don't you, maybe you've been there, I'm not sure, but at any rate, it's, it's scheduled for the 13th.
It's usually on a Thursday, usually like the first Thursday in November, that's where they like to have the awards banquet.
That's the regional townships.
Yeah, yeah, it's, so it's, they moved it, it's always been scheduled, it's always been on the first Thursday of the month, and for some reason, they changed it this year to the second Wednesday, which I think almost every Planning Commission meets on a Wednesday, so I'm not quite sure why they did that, so, my suggestion would be to, if the board has no problem, we'd move it to the 6th, a week early, it would be two weeks, it'd be today's, and we'd have two weeks of our study session, then two weeks of our November meeting, and, and the only reason I would suggest that, the only two options would be the 6th or the 20th, okay, and the 20th, I won't be here, 20th is the day I will take over as supervisor, so, just a suggestion, I'll leave it up to the board, otherwise, I may or may not be here for that. John, again, and I'm not sure about Molly.
We do, we do have five Wednesdays in October, so, your study sessions on the 23rd, two weeks from today, and then there'll be another week in between.
Be two-week cycle, so.
So, even though, if it were bumped up to the 6th.
Is there notice time, do we need to provide notice as far as the change publicly, John?
Yeah, there's, I mean, we just have to be public notice, we would cancel the, the one on the 13th and schedule it for the 6th.
I just wanted to see if we were gonna have a quorum, you said you would not be here on the 6th?
I will be here on the 6th.
I will be here.
I'll be here.
You won't be on the 6th?
I will be.
I will be.
You will be?
Okay.
I would be.
I'll be here, I'll be here. And we're all, the election's done, I mean, the building's available.
It'll be the day after the election, yeah. The room will be available, presumably.
I have a conflict earlier in the evening, I could come to this meeting on the 6th, but late, but as long as you got a quorum, that's not an issue, you've got enough people to get it kicked off.
Looks like there could be a couple items on there, you know.
Do you want a motion?
Yeah, we'd need a motion if you want to change that.
Make a motion that would change the November meeting from the 13th to the 6th.
Score.
The 13th.
13th, yeah.
To the 6th, yeah.
Yeah, so the motion's being supported to move our November meeting from November 13th to November 6th, and provide notice as, as applicable, any further discussion on that motion?
Same time.
Yeah, same time.
At 7:00 P.M.
Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, opposed, excuse me, thank you. Items for our next agenda, our October 23rd study session, zoning ordinance discussion, signs and definition of substantial construction, good one, good topic, and then recent development photos, anything else you could foresee on a?
Also follow up to the map conference, any of the sessions, there was actually quite a few, quite a few good ones, between the two of us, we covered quite a few sessions, so we'll bring materials from that.
And then if you do hear anything from Tower Wireless, feel free to bring it on our study session, I don't think you'd hear anything from them, so.
Well, now that the meeting's on the 6th, that is the official 120 days from the, when it was first tabled, so, there'll be action one way or another that day.
Yeah, sounds good. All right, anything else? Bob's, Bob's not on his game down there tonight.
I make a motion, will you adjourn?
All right, we're done.
Support.